We're live.
I think we're live. Do you see the recording? Okay. All right, we are here with Tom Juszczyk and Steve Mondragum. They are the Republican candidates for town council. I'm trying to figure out, okay, sorry, out of all this shit popping up. Welcome, guys. Thank you again. This is the second time the two of you have been on, which is good. And Tom, I think this is your third. Am I right?
My third. One more time, yes, since.
Yeah, yeah. So how's the campaign going, guys?
It's been going pretty good. I think, you know, we had a lot of great, you know, the reception has been great. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people so far. And I think we're all on the same page. I think we all, you know, most people in the town are really against what's going on here. And they don't really understand why we have so much development going on and are scared that it can continue. And we need, you know, qualified candidates to get into office and, you know, work to try to prevent more of this from happening.
So I want to go into the, Steve, do you have anything you wanted to kind of add to?
So, thank you. This is my first time. It's been a pretty eye opening experience. I've learned a lot and it's, you know, the one thing, I think Tom and I, I think Tom would agree that I'm pretty, we're both pretty happy with this. Has been a relatively friendly and civil campaign thus far. And I think it goes to show that, especially in a small town community like Berkeley Heights, it doesn't need to get nasty. So kudos to them.
It's actually been very refreshing to see that, that nobody's really, you know, we've first, personally, both of us have run completely positive campaigns, meaning that we've run on our own merits. We haven't bad mouthed them in any way or form. And I haven't seen, you know, that being done in the opposite direction. And this is really what I think and what I've always dreamt that Berkeley Heights politics really should be like. And it's, we're all friends at the end, you know, at the end of the day, we should all be able to, you know, see each other and like, you know, agree to disagree and still have friendly conversations, even though we might disagree with, you know, some of the items on the list. But it's been very refreshing. This is, you know, it's nice just to go out there and, you know, and have conversations and not have to worry with all, you know, all the negativity that sometimes happens.
So I've noticed your signs popping up pretty late. And then Laura, you know, you could just shut me up when you click on.
I will. Don't worry.
I've noticed your signs coming in. Was your strategy, I want to go to campaign first and then kind of talk about some issues. Is that okay, guys?
Sure.
Was your strategy kind of like, it seemed like very low key this year. I mean, I see a lot of your signs, but they came up late in the game. I mean, they're all over the place. I mean, you've gotten about the same amount of real estate as Margaret and Bill. What was the thinking? Is there a kind of a thinking behind that or?
I don't think there's really a need to have them up so early. I mean, when people are voting, I mean, are people really remember what signs were up? And what signs weren't up a month ago?
I've been obsessed with signs this year. So the answer for me is yes, but.
I'm sorry, what was?
I've been obsessed with signs. Signs have been a big fucking deal on my mind this year. So yes, the answer to that question, Tom, is yes.
I'm always obsessed with signs. I love the sign game. It's always a fun game, but you know.
Many accusations of people tearing down signs this year. And I feel like we're missing out on a Berkeley Heights tradition. Every year, one campaign accuses another campaign of destroying signs. I don't know. We still have a couple of weeks left. I don't know, you know, we'll see, but we're almost through this.
Not planting seeds.
I'll send you some pictures. So, but anyway, yeah, but no, it really hasn't been bad. It actually hasn't been bad. I've seen it in other years. There's, you know, that's been, that's been an issue, you know, and then, you know, you go to talk to, you know, you, because then you ask, you have to, you talk to the guy and they're like, oh no, we never did anything with our signs. And then you're wondering how they disappeared. And it usually happens in a, in a row. I've seen it, but I haven't seen any of that. Again, you know, kudos to, you know, to our opponents for keeping this, you know, up and up and just, I think it's more of a friendly, you know, a friendly competition at this point. And we're working on our merits. And I think the residents will be able to vote for who they feel is most qualified to be the councilman or the council members.
Well, and I think that the point to really emphasize or to underline here is that we're all neighbors, you know what I mean? We all shop at the Stop and Shop. We all go to the same places. And I see John at Dunkin' Donuts every morning, you know what I mean? So.
He does. Excuse me.
There's no, there's no need for this to get nasty, you know? I think, you know, we've, that was something that we both emphasized very early on in the process. That we don't want to go there. And so to Tom's point, you know, yeah, kudos to them for running a mud slinging free event.
Yeah, I do. I agree with you guys. I think that it's been a much more, I think this year in both elections, both in terms of the BOE, which I think is uncontested, but you do have, I mean, I think it's important to vote for those guys, the sign Natasha, and kind of show support. But I also think in the town council campaign, it's been, it feels like very professional, very fact based. I think the narrative on the social media pages has been very much about the issues and the facts. And there hasn't been like these gang wars with residents that we've witnessed over, you know, the past few years. So I agree with you guys that it has been sort of a refreshing change. Laura, do you have any campaign related questions before I get into some of the deeper stuff or?
Not really. Do you think a campaign could ever be too nice?
Um, well, I think I have to, I must say that there is a difference between running a campaign against incumbents versus when neither, none of us have served. So when you're going against incumbents, you know, you're really trying to differentiate yourself and what you would do better. They're the ones who are coming back in. And you have to say, well, you know, this has to change. And really that's, I'm the person that's going to change this. Now, you know, we're all now trying to say, well, we're going in and we're going to change something. Or otherwise you're going to say, we're happy with how everything is. So I think it's, it's a little bit easier to have some less, not confrontation, but less disagreements when you're all kind of new to it and you haven't served before. So that's why I think no is the answer. And I'm glad that we can all just present ourselves in a positive way, push what we're really for, show our credentials and why we're the most qualified to be on the council. And, and let everybody just show why they feel that they're the best to manage the budget. Really what the town council is about is managing the budget, you know, doing some town planning, just making sure things like overdevelopment doesn't happen, which obviously is one of our, our, our big points and, you know, dealing with contracts and things like that. You know, so it's really just, you know, who's the most qualified to read through a contract, to, you know, to look through a budget, try to find places where it can be improved on or get more bang for the taxpayers buck. You know, and who's the best one to come up with innovative strategies, maybe to dealing with different types of negotiations? You know, so that's the qualifications. That's really what it's all about. And we all just need to show why we are the best and the most qualified to do what the, what the town council needs to be done or what's, what's the role of the town council.
I think the general. I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, hey, okay.
I, um.
I forgot how much fun this is.
Important to state, and I meant to do at the beginning, that all candidates running for a seat on council were given the opportunity to come on either as a group to do a debate or just to come on to do a roundtable. So I don't want anyone to think we're playing favorites. So I just wanted to, you know, we appreciate that you both have come on twice. I think it's important to, you know, not just maybe get a flyer in your mailbox or, you know, have a conversation on the street, but kind of, kind of hear some of the important issues and, you know, to see your faces.
I was actually looking forward to having, again, a very friendly, like we're having here, but having two more faces here. It would have been nice for us to actually been able to, you know, allow the residents to see the different points side by side. Unfortunately, didn't happen. But, you know, I was looking forward to that. And I wish, you know, it would have happened. I tried to actually reach out to them as well to try to work something out, but I guess all our schedules didn't end up working out.
I'm the only face you need, baby. So, so I guess, you know, and we're getting close to the end of it and we're kind of on, and I want, I do want to get to deeper stuff, but we're, the landing messages, I think, if I'm interpreting this correctly, on their side, they're pushing collaboration personality. You see a lot of like family endorsements and it's, it's that end. And on your end, it looks like you're pushing, you're not, and they're not, you know, one isn't casting aspersions on the other. We're just talking about what's the emphasis. On your end, I think it looks like the emphasis is on qualifications and, you know, that essentially that, like who's most qualified for the job. And I guess, do you see that being sort of the, sort of the landing messages throughout the last, next two weeks on both fronts?
Yeah, I mean, certainly on our, our end is, I just feel we, the town needs to really focus on qualifications. There's enough, you know, in the past that, you know, well, not in the past, but you don't want to hire, you don't want to elect somebody because they're popular. You don't want to elect somebody because, just because they agree with your, your national politics. There's really no national politics involved in the local, you know, in the local elections. It's really about who's the best person to optimize dollars in the budget? Who's the best person to, you know, to plan the town or any growth or developments in the town? You know, who's the best to negotiate contracts? And what I've been trying to tell people, and I'll tell people, whoever's watching this, is that, you know, if you had to get a surgery done, you wouldn't, you wouldn't say, well, I like this doctor because he agrees with my national politics. You're going to get the, you're going to get the doctor that's the most qualified to do the job. And that's really, it should be the same logic falling through to, to the town council. You know, it's, it's our town. We need to have the best people in there to do the job. And I feel that Steve and I are the most qualified for this job. You know, and we're willing to collaborate. So all the other things you said as well, we're willing to collaborate. We're willing to work with the other side. I've got put on the, the recycling task force with, from, from Mayor Angie DeManey. I work with, you know, I've, you know, I think a working relationship with her where, you know, I've participated in town councils and I feel it's been pretty friendly. And I think we'll both work with both sides actually pretty smoothly.
Steve, any thoughts on that?
No, I mean, I would second the point that Tom made, you know, if, if we were all interviewing for a job, you know, you wouldn't necessarily pursue somebody because he or she is likable or.
Or likable, though. You're also likable.
One more than the other, but okay.
In the end, I mean, you just want the person that suited for the role. And I think to Tom's point, I think based on the experience and the backgrounds that we both have, I put my resume up against.
Yeah, I do think, I think likability and approachability are kind of important, but I think it's very over. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting at all that Margaret and Bill are not qualified. I think messaging is. I do think that, I think it's kind of been poisoned in this town for so many years in terms of like, that turning somebody into likable automatically means that the other person is kind of a piece of shit. And again, I don't think we've seen that this election, you know, which is on either, either of the governing bodies. I want to get into.
I just want to say one quick thing is, is I'm actually friendly with, with, with both Bill and Margaret and, you know, and they're, and most people on the council. You know, so, you know, again, that's just strengthening your point, I guess.
Yeah. So the biggest question that I think you, your side and their side kind of deviated on, and I, well, I don't want to say sides, right? Because I think Margaret responded to this. And I think you and Steve responded to the fourth question on Oprah reform. And sort of opening up, you know, committee meetings. And I think Margaret's position, and I'm just going to read it verbatim. You know, in terms of the Oprah, she felt it would be premature to sort of put anything on a town level right now. Because, you know, Danielson's, Danielson is, Danielson's legislation is one, I guess, it is one of many ideas on the table. I think he was just trying to play hero or he was afraid of something. I'm not really sure. But he got a big reaction simply because his legislation was so terrible, you know, his proposal, his proposal was so terrible. And on her, her perspective was, you know, it's a little too early to do that. And then with regard to township committees, she did not agree with the belief that there was a political formula behind the appointments. But she did feel like improvements could be made. So she was sort of, so her position is like, things are kind of okay. There's not a lot of radical change that we have to make here on any of those things. And I think from your perspectives, though, the, I think you seem to be more friendly to the idea of kind of having local level protections to say Oprah. And, and that there was some reform needed for township committees. So can you be a little bit more specific about that, guys, as far? Let's go to the township committees, because Oprah, I think, has been talked a lot about. But let's go to township committees and what you guys think needs to change there.
Well, for township committees, my thought has always been that really you should have township committees that are outside of the control of the township government. And I don't really know the formula for that. Maybe that's what's stopping that. But it would be nice if you had a township committee when they're, when they're not, you know, there's certain committees that are, you know, that the town charter, I guess, requires. But for the other ones that are created, they really should be outside of the, of the, of the scope of, I guess, the mayor appointing people. The only reason for that is because you end up, it ends up kind of now as a echo chamber a little bit. The mayor, I'm not saying that it happens, but the mayor is appointing people and they're going to point, you know, appoint certain people. Maybe that's not the people that the residents would choose. And the residents really don't play a big enough role in these committees. And these committees now are making recommendations to the council. And I've seen it where some of these committees actually, that the town council just follows what these committees say. So they're actually doing things that almost when they're, when they've made their decision, will end up being approved by the council without, with very few questions asked. And I think part, part of that is because the mayor and the council are appointing them or the mayor points them, the council approves them. And, you know, and, and so they're kind of an arm of the council. Where I'd rather see it be outside of the government, be more run by, independently by the residents. And that's just my feeling with that. I don't know if.
Can residents just do that now then? Right? So just playing devil's advocate a little bit, because I agree with you largely on that, actually. I don't like the idea of political appointments, but the challenge in my mind comes down to like, what's stopping us from doing that? Right? Like, I'm sorry.
I think you can do it. The problem is now, will that, like, say, we started a group now and I don't know, the communications committee, that's now defunct and it's going to get changed. But say we created the communication committee, which let's call even Berkeley Heights Community Watch, the communications committee. The point is now, will the town even listen to?
That's right.
The Berkeley Heights Community Watch as the communications committee in the same way that they listened to the communications committee when it was appointed by the mayor and a group that they created themselves. And I think this is more valuable, because I saw some of the communication that almost seemed like at the time, sometimes it came off as propaganda. And it actually, it, you know, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, maybe it was people just being honest about what was going on in town. But since it's that connected to the government, you know, it's, it kind of puts everything in doubt that it's not being controlled by the same, by the same groups rather than by the citizens. My, a big part of our platform has been to get the citizens more involved or the residents more involved. And I even say, I want to be transparent. I think everybody wants to be transparent, but I want to go well beyond transparency. I want to go into where the residents actually play a role in this and help create the decisions that are being made, help drive our future. When we're approving things, when we're approving designs, when we're approving whatever we're approving, you know, there, there should be open channels for the residents. So I'm beyond transparency. I think transparency is one layer, but the inclusion of the residents is another layer that I really like to push. And that's, I think, feeds into this whole thing with the committees. I don't know if I'm explaining that correctly.
You are. Okay. Steve, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I mean, look, as far as the, the point that Tom just made in terms of, this, this whole thing is designed to work with, you know, citizen feedback, you know, I think if, if we're operating in echo chambers, we're just going to get more of the same, you know? So I, you know, I agree with Tom where I, we need to create or maybe foster an environment where thinking independent of, you know, what the governing bodies think is welcome, you know? And I think maybe, maybe that's to your point earlier, John, where, where I forgot the term you used, where it became rotten over the years. And, you know, and having that nasty political discourse go back and forth really just kind of splashes people's comfort in speaking out. So I think, you know, I mean, we, we've been open to feedback from day one. And we want the feedback. We want to hear what people are thinking. And people are telling us. So, you know, I think we need, we certainly need more participation because, from the, from the community. Because with not, without that participation, you get a lot of, you know, why did this happen? When did this happen? Who made that decision? And, you know, we stand a better chance of all being in a happier place if there's more involvement across the board.
I'm going to make one more. I just, Laura, I'll let you, so I actually, like I said, I think I'm very, I'm very on the same, I'm very on the same page with township committees as you guys are. That's one issue, I think, you know, I think I align on different things with, with each of you, you know, each, each side. But I really, it's really hard not to see the committee process as political. I think the challenge, though, is even if you had it outside town, and I've kind of witnessed this firsthand, actually, believe it or not, politics still gets involved. So then what you have is a mad rush of people who are supportive of one side, take over leadership spots and then kind of start throwing people out. So, and even though it's not, and then they start becoming, it starts becoming an insensuous relationship. So, so I don't know, I don't think you guys are wrong. I just don't have a good solution to removing kind of what that issue is out of the work of committees. Like, I don't think, I don't, I don't have a solution to that. I agree with you that things need to change. And I agree with you that I think separating it from the, separating it from an appointment and making it a more democratic process is important. It's sort of what happens after that, I think. You know, there's, there's a ton of other shit after that that could go wrong as well.
Maybe, one solution, and this is just, right now I thought of it, maybe have something where the town, you know, the town council or the mayor, you know, as these are starting to progress, if that starts being a problem where these committees are being partisan or social group based or whatever, that's when they step in and say, okay, look, we want you to participate and we need your feedback, but you absolutely need to start changing some, you know, some of the membership and start fixing this issue. That's where we need some kind of leadership, you know, and trust. I think that's the other thing, trust and leadership from, from the mayor and council.
All right, Laura, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to keep going. I mean, I do, I did mean to keep going, but.
You definitely do. No, I mean, the only comment I would have, and as silly as it seems, it's almost as if the governing body of our, our small township would be to the benefit to, you know, I've always said like to remove the politics, because at the end of the day, you want people not invested in, you know, showing face for their party or representing their party, but you want them doing the job to make their neighbors their friends, you know, our local business owners. And I think that's, and it sounds like this is, this is your messaging and I'm hearing it universally is that we need to get back to, oh, I'm representing the views of my party, therefore I'm voting this way or recommending this. And I really think getting back to, hey, what's best for, you know, my neighbor across the street who's dealing with this issue? And for those school kids that have that really, you know, inopportune bus stop at the end of the, so I think, I like, I really like what I'm hearing. And I, I like your ideas and I think it's time that we kind of wash, whitewash kind of what's been done. Because I think we've gotten to a point in this town where you just have people that don't want to be involved, either because they're scared of what it's become, or, you know, you've kind of been, you know, taken out, you know, physically taken, removed from it because of whatever, you know, I can, been there personally, you know, like, my face wasn't fresh enough. So, so it's just these people that have been tarnished. And I think my face is very fresh, but, so that's all. I don't really have a question. I just felt like I needed to talk for a few minutes, so I'm good.
I'm sorry, I got to talk.
The one thing I would add to that is I actually think that for, for the town council, really it should be nonpartisan. I've been saying that for a while. The partisan politics that really should play no role in this local, in the, in the local town, town council. It's really, it should be more like the Board of Ed, you know, where the best candidates, you know, go forward and people get to vote on the individual candidates. I don't really like that. It's, it's so linked up with politics that really have nothing to do with being qualified for the town council. And that's, you know, and that's the thing. And it's also, it allows certain groups to, you know, we probably talked about this and I don't really want to go into it, but you have committees that control who, who's able to run and who's not able to run. And it's just, I don't think it really brings out, it brings, people vote, I think, sometimes because they're voting party lines. They're voting, you know, for other things other than who's the best candidate. And I think it should be non, it should be nonpartisan.
So the next thing I kind of want to go to, which is, I think a favorite topic of yours is affordable housing.
Development. I don't know if you.
Overdevelopment. Yeah, I'm sorry. That's right. But I'm going to affordable housing because of the meeting on 9/19. I don't know if you, there was a September 19th meeting where there was this whole discussion. And it feels like, so I feel like the different, I could be misinterpreting this. The differences, I think, between, say, you know, you, Steve, and then Margaret and Bill, Margaret and Bill are kind of approaching it from, well, just I'll speak for Margaret, because I've heard Margaret talk about ADUs and ways of sort of say, like accommodating the affordable housing requirement through different avenues. I think the mayor has spoken to reforming some type of committee at the state level that Christie took out that managed this as well. And I think, what do we have, like 30 affordable housing units left that we just found out about? What is it?
Yeah, it was, some of the 30, I think it's 30. But yeah, it's like all of a sudden, I thought we, we met our obligation. And now all of a sudden, we still have another 30 to meet or whatever. That's going to end up being 139 apartments or whatever the numbers. I don't have those numbers right off the top of my head, but yeah.
And I guess, you know, again, I'm just going to go back to, you know, with regard to two of the town council folks, one of them was sort of there when this whole thing started. It was almost like there's no solution, but the solution that we had established three or four years ago, right? Which is just kind of like grading. This is the same problem with the Board of Education. It's like fucking like blinders. Like there's, there's no other way but the fucking way we came up with.
Stop. Two in a row.
Language, John.
Like you guys don't watch.
I spent eight years in the office. I'm all right with it.
Yeah, he doesn't care. Why the fuck do you care?
Your muffs.
Right. My little lay of muffs. So like, so, so do you see ADUs as an avenue? I mean, like where, is there a difference in terms of, like, it feels, it feels like you and them both don't want this. Like, do you feel like, do you feel like ADUs are a solution to this? And I'm not saying that's the only thing they believe, but what's your approach to this?
Yeah, I don't think I really like the idea of ADUs. I mean, I would have to see more what the actual solution is. I think the devil's in the details. I have seen apartments going door to door where they're already, you know, they're, they're, it's a single family home. They get an extra kitchen and bathroom put in somewhere. And now they're renting that out to somebody else. And to be honest with you, that's not really. And to be honest with you, that's not really fair to the residents. You know, you you you're you're buying a house in a single family home, you know, area that's, you know, a neighborhood. And now you have, um, you know, uh, multifamily homes in that, in that zone.
But one extra person is a.
Well, it is a one extra person, I mean, um, so but the problem, the problem is with the the uh, enforcement of it. I think is my issue, is once you have it, so say it's for, you 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 say, oh, yeah, my my uh, my mother's coming and moving in and with. With us. Um, what, who's enforcing that this isn't now being rented out? Um, and it, you know, obviously across the board, if it's only one or two families, it's really not that big of a solution. If this, in order for this to be a solution, it would have to have, you know, a lot of people doing it. So this is not a small issue. We're talking about if we want to make this the norm throughout the town. And basically, the risk you're running is to run into multifamily, uh, a single family. A zone, single family being used for multifamily purposes.
But you could, you could, could you address that through an ordinance where it's, you kind of define how many people?
You could, you could address it through an ordinance, but again, uh, who's enforcing this thing? And now you have an enforcement issue, and I doubt it would be enforced. That would be, my issue would be, how are, what's the, what's the plan on enforcement? So I might be open to it if there was a, if there was a plan for enforcement, you know, there was a limit, you know, certain limitations. But I just don't see that happening, and once this passed, you're almost opening the door up um, for a lot of these changes. And that's my, you know, uh, I'd have to see more about the actual plan. I think the devil's in the details for this.
Where do you land on ADU, Steve? Like any, any, or or where do you land on this in general, like in terms of affordable housing?
You know, I I think the libertarian, the um, likes the idea of, you know, look, if this is your property, dude, you know, it's your property.
That's how I feel, yeah, yeah.
But I think to Tom's point, you know, who, how how do you regulate that, you know, and I think it would basically.
But you're a libertarian, so why do you fucking have to regulate it, right?
Libertarian do is you also are bought, when you purchase your property, you purchased it. Under the assumption of the the zoning that currently exists. Um, you know, so any changes to zoning have to be taken very seriously, because the people who bought in under a certain terms. Um, really have to be, you know, you have to think about how that affects them. And, you know, so that's my, you know, my thing as well.
Sorry, Steve, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off with my like, my rage, go ahead.
No, no, it's okay, yeah, I mean, so I think, I I, you know, the the question really becomes, you know, do we want or need more government? Um. Keeping an eye on something that, you know, may or may not be the solution. Um, and then.
Oh, that's a fair point, yeah.
You know what I mean? And 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 then the then the then the libertarian really comes out and says, no, I don't want more government watching over me and. And um, trying to reg, I just want to be left alone, leave me alone, leave me in peace, and you know, so. And and in the end, it may not even be the solution that we need, so um.
So what is the solution, right? So how do you solve the housing issue in? Well, so I think every town has to figure out, has to figure out a way to contribute to, I don't know if they have to, but we have the housing problem in New Jersey, right? I mean, you may, well, actually, it depends on your perspective. I think we have a housing problem in New Jersey. Um. How do you solve it to that middle class and working, and again, that you, your, the answer is legitimate, well, like, you know, that's a market issue, and that's, that's a fair answer. But how do you solve this, right? How do you solve this without the government getting involved? Like, and and what does it look like for a town like us?
Well, I I I, you know, I, and I, so the 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 history of it is that it's actually a zoning, it comes down to a zoning issue. We have different, um, uh, we have different businesses. So you have um, Connell, you have Nokia, you have Summit Medical Group, um, we have our local police department. Um, you know, and other local businesses, smaller, you know, smaller businesses. And the idea is that they need a place, they should have a place that uh, they can afford to live locally. And that was the idea with all this. And um, from my understanding of the law, and I tried to do a lot of research on it. Really, it comes down to a zoning issue that the town has to allow zoning to, for this type of housing um, to be built. Um, the issues that I have is just the um, the blatant, you know, it's, in my opinion, that we overdid the. Uh, we gave out sweetheart deals to these developers, and not only did we just, uh, we we give them the high density that they ask for. We even gave them higher density than what they asked for. Then on top of it, we incentivize these developments. Um, there's nothing in any of this COA or anything that I know of where you are forced. To um, hand out tax abatements or somewhat subsidize the apartments. Um, so I don't know.
The pilots, right, Tom, that you've been talking to?
The pilots are are, you know, and I, it's, it's kind of gets complicated, but at the end of the day, they pay. Uh, it's a tax abatement, it's a very large a tax abatement, it's, they're paying somewhere between twenty and forty cents on the dollar, what they should be paying in taxes. Nothing to the schools. That means if there's any children in any of these apartments, um, you and I are 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 paying for them. And that's not even the low income ones, you know, that's the market rate apartments. Um, and I don't understand why, why the resident, the current residence should be paying for, uh, you know, these, these developments. For even the market rate. I can understand that there might be an argument for the low income or the people that, uh, you know, to subsidize that. But I really don't understand why we're subsidizing market rate apartments. And one of my vows is to vote no on anything that is a pilot. I will vote no on every single pilot. I will try to avoid the use of the redevelopment law if possible. Um, but uh, in general, because I think that that leads, it's a slippery slope, it lets you uh, override zoning. Um, I really believe in zoning. I think we need to 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 uh, hold people to the zoning. For example, there's a a piece of property, um, the old nursing home right by you, I I I believe.
Oh, my God, that place is like.
And something needs to be done there, right? We all.
Right, but I don't want it to be like an apartment complex either, you know?
Exactly, so something needs to be done there. I mean, I would like, you know, something, you know, some, a store of some sorts, I think would be great for our downtown. Um, you know, and but they are zoned um, to have a certain number of apartments there, right? Um, but it's not the super high density like the ones that are behind uh, uh, over by, behind Delicious Heights.
Right, right.
That was only allowed to have that density because they used the redevelopment law. I would say, and from what I heard, I actually heard something from actually one of your neighbors, um, that said that uh, um. That uh, plans were already submitted to that, to in into there that was supposed to fit in with zoning. But the town is pushing back and for the use of the redevelopment law, and I would, I'm gonna ask that at the next council meeting. Um, but I'd like to look into that a little bit more, but once the redevelopment, and oh, and let me add one more thing, I'm I'm talking a lot now. But at at the, one of the last meetings I was at, um, the uh, they were talking about. Us uh, doing a redevelopment plan for that property. And in that meeting, I I I started asking some very basic questions, why we're going down the road of the redevelopment plan. And I didn't feel that anybody on the council, uh, you know, or the mayor had any sufficient. Um, had a sufficient answer, and they seemed almost confused themselves uh, about why we were doing it. Um, at that point, I said, we can't, you guys can't vote on this, you can't vote yes if obviously nobody here understands what they're voting on. And I asked for that to be tabled, and in fact, it was.
Yeah, that, you know what, that made me really fucking nervous, because this is the same shit I did a few years back. And it's the same shit that the Board of Education does, where they hire a consultant. And I'm not saying these people don't know what they're fucking talking about, but you know, there's a part of me that wonders, are they just going up there being told? Do, saying what they're paid to say. Do they already have a fixed formula that's really divorced from our reality? It's just that, hey, I've done this in fifteen other towns, so your town should do it. And then it becomes the expert. I'm, man, I'm so glad that that stupid, the expert shit isn't like a mantra anymore in town. So to your point, yeah, I I that got me really nervous. Uh, uh, the other thing that got me nervous was was. That same thing on the nineteenth, when that guy came up, and it was just basically like, I don't even know if the guy lives here. But shooting everybody down when they had an issue with, like, asking questions about these thirty units. It's it's this rigidity, it's almost like they're committed to doing this, or they, they already have an idea fixed in their head. And what they're trying to figure out is how to get people to buy into it. I'm not saying that that's what hap, that's what's happening, but it hap, it's happened here so many times. And that sort of felt like that to me, you know?
I could add more to it is, you have to be careful with the expert's opinion, because some of these experts are actually making money off of. Off of what's going on. I've seen, you know, I've seen the, some of the the bills from the, our town planner, and you'd be sound. How, uh, you know, how much, how much, uh, you know, uh, it he gets, you know, he's getting from doing all these extra plans. I would question, you know, how much does, is the lawyer getting paid for putting all these uh?
Yeah.
Pilot deals and the redevelopment laws and, uh, you know, negotiating things and, and, you know. This is kind of big business, so when we're asking people, experts for opinions, you also have to ask. You know, are 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 you, are you make, are, is there any profit? Do you, are you nonbiased? And that's why I also think, to be honest with you, is we need somebody who's really qualified for the job. We need somebody who, yeah, can listen to expert opinion, testimony, and understand it from where it's coming from. But also be able to read the documentation, um, have a bigger understanding of what's going on, and formulate their own opinion rather than. Just punted to the expert.
I'm gonna share this with you. So I I I don't know if you saw this or not, can you hear me? Oh, yeah, I don't know if you saw this or not. And I I I really didn't look at this closely, it's just something we got and we posted it off the agenda. They put, this was the uh, the audit. Uh, or the corrective action plan. A few people I spoke to said, you know, this seems like a common, did you, did you guys look at this? Is there anything that concerned you about this, or did you guys not have a chance to see this yet?
I I was at the, at the meeting, um, you know, there's, there's some concerning things in there. Uh, you know, the the, I guess what was told to us at that time is that they were, um, they were looking into this, and some of this is fairly standard. Um, do you have a specific one that you're?
No, no, I I just wanted your general pers, uh, your general thought about, like, this, if this feels like. Like, I I haven't even really looked at this, I don't, I haven't like, um, dug into this. I wasn't sure if there was anything that you guys felt residents should be concerned about, or is this like, this is just kind of this kind of shit that audits comes up as a, come, comes up in audits? It's not a big deal.
Well, I mean, obviously, it's 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 somewhat of a big deal, but I think that audits are are done to, to find things. And then you have a corrective action uh, into the, in, into it, um. You know, some of the, I think there was one or two items in this, I don't remember off the top of my head, but there was one or two items that I did seem a little bit. Uh, concerning, I think some of the, the ones about the funding, I, they had to show political donations or something like that, I thought was. Um, a little bit uh, curious, because we're moving forward with contracts without really seeing, um. There, I think that was the one that kind of, uh, uh, there, if you want to, you know.
There is one that came up for me, because I I forgot who it was, but somebody brought up the idea of the uh, sort of CMFO, they refer to it as a CMFO here. And I, and then I I think there was a question as to like, how long have we had, I mean, like, we've had an interim one for a while now or. Um, and, you know, and 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 I guess that's, that's come up here in terms of an absence of an appointed CMFO for two fiscal years. Um, so I'm not sure what the barrier to that is, or hiring somebody for that position.
Yeah, I mean, they had one, I don't know why they, uh, you know, they, they haven't rehired one, but I would also say, yeah, if you. You have to have somebody tied in and be, you know, responsible for some of this stuff. Maybe that's, that's the issue there, I mean, um. Yeah, I don't know why we haven't hired one, I should, you know, that's probably something that would be a good question for them.
Yeah, all right, uh, I don't know, Laura, you got it. That, I only threw that up there just to see what you guys thought about it. I I don't really have any great insight into it. Um, Laura, do you have any other questions? I mean, you've been taking up this whole fucking show, but.
Well, it should be about me, honestly. Uh, no, I don't, I think these are all, these are all interesting. Points, we're heading, carry on.
Well, I I mean, I don't, I don't have anything else, I mean, there's any guys.
I can say about even that the audit, um, they should be able to have a, you know, a dialogue in, and it should be an open dialogue. I don't think, you know, something with the audit, anybody should be, you know, ashamed or whatever, but. People should ask, like, what, why aren't we having, you know, why don't we have a CFO? And it should be an acceptable question. It, nobody should be really getting defensive on that. This is what the audit findings, people, you know, are trying to do. You have to be under the assumption that everybody's trying to do their best, uh, you know, and uh, us as as residents and as community watchmen. Uh, you know, we're, we're just trying to learn and and also throw in our two cents and and. Uh, be politically uh, uh, involved, um, and uh, we should be able to ask the types of questions. Uh, there, and it should be, it should be cordial, it shouldn't, or, you know, it it should be welcome and open. And I I think, to be honest with you, uh, the town has improved on that.
Yeah, big time, big time, yeah.
And I think you still got a little ways to go on the uh, on the um, Board of Ed side of that. Uh, but I would like to see, you know, that we can all question, we could question what's going on. I think we also as a community watchman just need to be respectful that, um, the same way, uh, we're not perfect. Sometimes they're not perfect, and and, uh, you know, we just got to, um, you know, try to know that we're working, we're all working together. And that's easier to do when there's mutual respect and and openness. When you kind of get shut out of a, of of a conversation is when there's a little distrust. And then everything seems to be a little bit bigger than than it probably is. And that's where, you know, you're, you know, you're just wondering, uh, you know, what's hidden behind each rock.
Yeah, I mean, I think in one context, like the town council context, that that kind of applies, I think. You know, I I've made it a secret about this, I think, I think the Board of Education has just kind of fallen off a cliff, and I hope over the next year. I I, because I I I just think there's just, there is absolutely. You know, it it's just, i- i- it's, you kind of have to scrape the barrel for respect, there just isn't. And I think, I think both sides are very mad at each other. Um, the difference being, one side, I think. Actually has the facts, and and of course, I'm biased, and and the other side, I don't, I don't know.
Facts, is that what you're saying?
Huh?
They they have the facts, is that what you're saying?
No, oh, they, they have a certain kind of, I don't know, like, I don't know, man, it's just, it's it's really bizarre. And I think, I think when you feel like the conversations aren't honest or or authentic, it's real, it's really hard to like. To to have a sense of likability towards a person. I can, I can disagree with someone respectfully if I feel like they're coming at me authentically. But I think if you're just kind of full of shit, you know, which I, which I think we found month after month after month. It's really hard to, to buy into that, you know? Uh, that's just my little thing. I'm not, I could say that because I'm not running for office.
There's a little humility, humility involved, uh, what I, you know, I haven't been to, I haven't been to, uh, some of the meetings in a while. In the Board of Ed meetings in a while, but um, at one point, they just stopped answering questions, and I think that's not. That's certainly just to end the dialogue and basically, you know, say, we're doing this and we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna even. Engage in a dialogue and uh, really try to limit and minimize uh, people. I don't think that's the answer. And it's actually the exact opposite of what I'm envisioning for this town, um, is to really maximize that rather than minimize. Um, but again, it takes you, it takes humility, it takes the, you know, the ability to know that uh, mistakes will be exposed. So, you know, uh, you know, none of us are perfect, some of us will make, you know, we're gonna make mistakes. And uh, it just takes a little bit of trust, to trust the residents, um, that, you know, that if a mistake is made, you know, well, you know. It's 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 not because somebody, you know, didn't want to do the right thing, but um, because, you know. It it was just overlooked or a difference of opinion.
Yeah, I I think that's true for the town.
Yeah.
I don't know, I I I honestly, I I I'm one hundred percent honest, I don't know if that's necessarily true. I I, so I I think your, your philosophy is an absolute good fit for the town, is what I'm saying, the town council. Um, you know, uh, yeah, I I think you guys have run a clean campaign, I I feel like you guys have, uh, been very clear on on the issues. Um, you know, and I think you've been pretty consistent on the issues that you've, you've put out there, Tom. I mean, you've, you've always talked about. I mean, this is something that you've, you've worked on, this isn't like the first year that you've come out, I mean, you 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 know, this is, this has been your thing. Well, I want to thank you and Steve, Tom, I want to thank you, I want to thank you, Steve. You, you, well, actually, you're welcome, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, you're welcome.
No, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
Anytime, you're welcome. No, but for real, thank you both for coming on and, um, you know, I, we're all, I, it's so funny, you keep talking about bias. But we're all, we're all inherently biased, it's just, it's part of our human nature, so, um, I really appreciate that you two have, you know. kind of thrown your hats in the ring and I, I think you're both, I think your hearts and your heads are both in the right place and I think residents should, you know, be looking to a new kind of wave of politics and then it's non-politics. It's, you know, the, the, really what's best for the people and what's best for the town. So I applaud you both and I support you both and I appreciate everything you've done. And I appreciate it being probably in my sixteen or seventeen years here, like the easiest campaign season ever. I'm like not hiding under any boulders or anything. Yeah.
Tom, Steve, column B, right? Your column B?
Yeah, we're column B. Vote, please vote November seventh. And also, early voting opens up tomorrow at the De Corso Center. I don't have the address off the top of my head, but you can vote now, I believe, through the, the Sunday before Election Day at the De Corso Center. And the hours, I don't know off the top of my head, but I think it's like eight to five or something like that. And it's, it's over there. It's a little hidden, so you gotta use a GPS. I, I get lost getting over there, but the De Corso Center in, in New Providence or voting's on November seventh at your local polling station from, I believe, six AM to eight PM.
Cool. Guys, have a good night, all right?
Column B. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.